I just muted myself.
You sound like you're in a barrel.
Better than one that over, I suppose.
It's your audible and there's no, there's no echo.
Good. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So we're all here. We determined that. That's a good start. And I was going to invite, or I will be inviting, public comments on non-agenda items. And just to reiterate, the, the public comment is something we as a board willfully and happily ask for. It is a courtesy that we extend. But it's always good to hear from people. So are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay. State your name and your address, please.
Anne.
You like?
Okay. Lorraine Iavani, 28 Iron Street.
Are you able to hear her?
Yeah.
So can you speak up a little bit more, please?
Okay, I will. Lorraine Iavani, 28 Iron Street. All right. Not related to anything on the agenda item. I just want to fully inform the board of a particular piece of information that may be of use to you at some point, whenever. Doesn't have to be tonight. It can be sometime down the road. And here is the infomancy. In 2015, the city of Beverly decided that they were going to draw 911 dispatch.
Okay, that 911 dispatch is on the agenda. We cannot be taking that. Okay. So if you'd like to move on to another topic, please do so.
I would. Okay. So the next sentence I have basically is.
Does it have to do with anything on the agenda, Lorraine?
No, it's just more, what happened was, and just give me a little history of the city of Beverly, Mass, which again might be useful to you and the whole board. And basically, they were fined $1 million for referring from 911 North Shore.
Lorraine, I cannot allow that. This is on the agenda. So please do not say.
Actually, that topic is actually not on the agenda.
North Shore 911 is on the agenda.
Beverly, Mass is not on the agenda.
Lorraine, I'm sorry.
As a courtesy, you've listened to various.
Lorraine, please do not continue on this topic.
I want to finish my sentence, if I may.
No, Lorraine. No.
They finally settled a million dollars.
Okay, Greg, what?
225.
Lorraine, you must stop. That has no bearing on it.
And actually.
Lorraine Iavani, we will disallow you from meeting if you're not going to follow the proper protocol. I'm sorry, but you can't, it does not give people an opportunity to be discussing. That's why we can't allow people to talk about items that are on the agenda. That's not okay for you to be able to come in and not anybody else. Do you understand that?
Fully noted, Madam Chair. Now, are you finished? And thank you. I appreciate your letting me finish.
Are there any other comments on items not on the agenda? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to committee interviews. We have Jeffrey Bobmer Turner, who has.
Skip number one.
I sure did. Oh, look at me skipping something really important and super funny about. So we have a young man here who's actually done quite a lot for our town in his not long number of years. But most recently, he went above and beyond. And so we have a certificate of recognition for Max Warner for outstanding performance in saving human life and the display of conspicuous initiative, capability, and intention to duty, thereby earning the respect and admiration of his peers and the voting public, and a lot more. Max did, on the 13th of July, 2022, observe a voter in distress after having fallen in the water. Voter not you. Max did recover the individual from the harbor, thus avoiding potential tragedy for the individual and his family. So while I make a little light of it, Max, it's truly remarkable feat. Thank you. And I would like to present this certificate of recognition to you. Come on up in the camera. There we go. Max, thank you so much. Nice and official. Well done. Thank you, Max. Bayon, would you like to make any comments?
Well, so I happened to be there with Greg. We were following public safety boats. My old ears didn't hear a thing.
Remind.
Yeah. So I was chatting with Greg and I saw Max just do this. Now, look over there, leap out of the boat, he's in the boat, and he said, someone's hovering for you, Bayon. And they're in the water and they can't get out. And so you sprinted down the dock and hit everybody else there. The gentleman out following him had his leg wrapped up in a dinghy. We couldn't get out. Stuck between two dinghies, just waiting for help. Next. So I'm very grateful for Max.
Absolutely. Not to. I have, on occasion, fallen off floats. And my question for Bayon is, are there ladders on the floats so that someone who was not lucky enough to have a rescuer right there could sooner or later just tangle himself or herself?
There is actually, when I can see it.
Okay. So each of the floats has some way that a person can get out who is not strong enough to lift himself up with his hands.
Including touch point as of today.
Thank you.
And I don't, would somebody like to get a picture of, I don't know if it's of any importance or if anybody wants to, but of Bayon, Max, his dad and me together.
No.
All of them. Lefty, I don't need to be in any picture, but if you want. And, and this is Max's dad, Ken Warnock, who's also been very involved in town with many. Whoops. Do you want to get in there?
No, no, no. This is my part of saying thank you due to the all of your training and connections. It's wonderful having you on our team.
Maybe he'll stick around.
Next generation.
Thank you, Max. Hey, good to know about the ladders. All right. So next on the agenda is the drought condition update. Greg, would you want to do this one or I do?
Well, I can start. Happy to. So, no surprise, it continues to be very dry. We are, a couple of weeks ago, we were eight inches behind the normal. We're probably closer to 10 at this point, nine and a half, 10. So obviously, things are very dry. The state has put a center of the third level of drought conditions. And so they highly, highly recommend that communities institute outdoor watering bans as we enter this more dry period. Unfortunately, our own supplies are doing okay. But it's anticipating that one road. This continues for all August and into September. And we get very worried about our supplies lasting through the winter. Because obviously, if it's cold and frozen, we're not getting more water. So as a precaution, Chuck, Dan, and I strongly recommend that you as board with your water commissioner hat on, declare a water emergency and institute a a ban for general outdoor water use, limiting it to 10 water between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM or 9:00 AM. Seven, seven, right? Best to get it done before it starts to heat up again. So that's where we are. And that's our recommendation.
Okay. Chuck, if you want to. Try mine.
Sure. You know, I don't really have much to add to what Greg said. You know, it has been very dry. As everybody knows, and you know, most lawns are already brown. So there's probably no saving them at this point if they're not already brown. So I guess the, the other thing just to keep in mind is the, the, the state has their own drought plan, and that's what's dictating that we're in a stage three critical drought. And so those are where those things that take into more, take into account more than just what, you know, is going on with our water supply. Those are more on a regional basis. And so, but again, as in, you know, staying with the messaging, you know, it kind of makes sense. Nobody can predict the future. So you know, but that's kind of where this recommendation is coming from. Obviously, we'll continue to monitor, you know, everything that's going on. But as Greg said, we are in, we are in okay shape with our own water supply. But just being good stewards of the environment is kind of where this is coming from, I think.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck. Comments from the board? John?
I, I'm certainly in favor of this. I think that when water bans are introduced and people don't necessarily see that there's a problem. And sometimes that happens. This is not one of those times. I think that everyone in town knows that it's pretty dry. And so I, I expect to feel pretty, pretty good conformance being the, any, any drought provision that we vote on.
Ryan?
I'm in favor, inasmuch as my first product. Well, we're getting, continuing to get updates.
They're checking the water, aren't they?
I just would like a clarification on what's being requested. When you say only allowing hand watering, does that mean just watering cans or you can use a hose by hand? Or could you be clear as to what you mean?
So, so we don't, we don't limit it to just buckets of water. You can use a hose.
Can use a hose.
As long as you're holding it.
Holding it. Okay.
But you're not supposed to put it on a sprinkler.
Okay.
Or an irrigation system. So it's really just.
Irrigation, no sprinkler. Okay. Thank you. And then my other question is, what's the accountability if we have someone who has an extremely green lawn?
Right. So there's an ability to find people.
Okay.
Who are violating the declaration. I think it's, I want to say it's a hundred dollars for the first offense, and then it goes up to $300. I'll have to double check that.
So would someone having be caught in the act or is that, you know, who's, who's accountable for determining? I mean, you could presume someone with a green lawn has been irrigating, but maybe that's not true, you know, so.
It's possible they have a private well.
Right.
So that's something that the DPW would verify. So if someone, so if the DPW notices it, you're not saying the door. You know, someone can observe and let the DPW know, but it will follow up.
Okay. So basically, it's if somebody suspects or wanted to hold someone accountable, it would be reported to the DPW. Thank you.
They have meters. Some, some residents have irrigation meters.
Right.
So they're.
So that should be zero after this? That's a really good point. Is that something that if we're allowing hand watering only, there should be no use of that irrigation? They would use the irrigation meter to.
There could be some water coming in.
Well, so yeah, most, most people's irrigation meters also, you know, serve their outdoor spigots. So whether it's a hose or some other thing, it's not necessarily an irrigation system, even though we call it an irrigation meter. So it's, yeah, we're not that sophisticated, unfortunately. And not only that, but we don't read meters on a daily basis. It's more of a quarterly. So we wouldn't know necessarily if they, if they were using that meter after, you know, after the ban was in effect.
Is there the ability to periodically monitor those during the ban, Chuck?
I, I mean, technically, yes, but it's not something that we've ever really contemplated. We, you know, we read meters four times a year when it's time. We don't typically, you know, go beyond that. And, you know, just because we meet, read your meter four times a year, you know, we're, we're reading, you know, our guys are out, you know, on a weekly or a couple of weeks basis for each quarter. So it's not like, you know, it just happens on one day. So it's, it's not quite that advanced.
But, but Kathy's point, then, if we are going to be putting into effect a water ban, then, then how are you to, how are not you personally, but how is that to be followed up if need be?
Yeah. So like Greg said, I mean, you know, if we, if somebody reports it, you know, we'll follow up or if we see it, you know, we'll try and educate people. You know, we're not exactly the water police looking to, you know, throw people in jail or anything like that. But, you know, we, it's just mostly to make people aware that it's happening. Obviously, we'll put out the sign boards and, you know, I'm sorry, Tiffany, will have some public messaging that goes out. But it's not something that, you know, we're, you know, we're going to be looking at around the clock necessarily. But, you know, we will be monitoring.
Thank you, Chuck.
So this is a good, good use of the reverse 911, probably, to get a notice out to everybody.
Yes.
That's what would be appropriate to do.
Yeah. Other heavy outdoor water uses, filling swimming pools, hot tubs?
Right. So those kind of uses are banned as an outdoor use.
So maybe we need to make the, the motion a little broader than only hand watering.
Yeah. So the, the typical verbiage is non-essential outdoor use is banned. So non-essential would be your pools and hot tubs and car washing and so on.
Can I make a suggestion? As far as printed or written communication to the public, what might be helpful is like a what's in and what's out slide, right? You know, yes or no. So irrigation, you can do this, but not this, car washing, you know.
I don't see what the problem with car washing is.
Car washing.
Well, it's non-essential.
Maybe, yeah, but it's one bucket and less water than I'd use in a shower.
Right. Yeah. So.
How do you wash your car? A lot of people keep the hose running while they're washing their car.
So, yeah. So that could be an example, though, if we wanted to allow some car washing, there is the no, you can't, as an example, you could say, no, not as a hose, but yes, you can use a no rinse formula, which is just a bucket with some stuff in it.
I think that makes sense.
Right. Because people want to maintain their investments.
Yeah. Tiffany can probably, just one sec, please, Sarah. Tiffany could probably get something on the website and we could get something into the fricket. Um, Sarah Melish?
Yeah. In the, in the context of global warming.
Yay. Sarah? Are you speaking as ZVA?
No, I'm speaking as a resident.
Okay. Name and address.
Oh, sorry. Sarah Melish, 11 Bennett Street. In the context of global warming, we need to retain our shrubs and trees. Are you going to allow drip irrigation to continue with respect to the shrubs and trees?
That, Kathy asked that, and that falls under non-essential outdoor use ban. But I, I certainly understand what you're saying.
I mean, I, I've lost already trees and shrubs that are outside of my drip irrigation system. The house next to me had almost every single tree cut down, so I no, no longer have shade on my shade gardens.
Right.
You know, we, we need to keep shrubs and trees. I agree with not having lawns, but.
Watch your plastic. Watch your plastic. We'll know.
Steve, Anne, you're not, you're not muted.
So I think we need to allow drip irrigation. That's my opinion. Thank you.
I think that's something.
Chuck, I don't know. Chuck wants to weigh in on drip irrigation.
Chuck, do you want to weigh in on drip irrigation?
Well, so I, I think the idea is that, you know, it's before, you know, if it's within the time window that Greg mentioned, then, you know, it would be allowed anyway. And second, second of all, you know, it, I don't, you, you can't really see drip irrigation. So, you know, I, I appreciate that Sarah is, you know, being a good steward and, you know, has that implemented. So I, I don't think it would be something that, you know, we would be, you know, looking at, you know, coming down on necessarily. Like I said, there's really not a mechanism for it. But, you know, it's just mostly people being, you know, honoring the, you know, honoring the ban.
Well, and drip irrigation by nature is drips. It's not, you know, you're not turning on a hose.
You're not putting water into the air to evaporate.
Yeah. I, I, if I may, I would, I agree with Sarah that protecting our trees is, is rather important. I know on my own property, we have not been watering our trees and, and they are suffering, and that's not a good thing. So I, I would support some type of drip irrigation, at least just, you know.
It's, it's a hard call. I mean, you, you save water and not have it later. And so I, it's, but I, I think as Anne pointed out, it not being lost by evaporation.
So a question, a clarification there, that's drip irrigation only between those hours of 1:00 and 5:00 and.
5:00 P.M. and 8:00 A.M.?
Yeah.
Isn't that it?
Only in the.
Yeah, 5:00 P.M. and 8:00 A.M. So at least. Okay. Are there any other comments on this? May I have a motion to have a ban in Manchester on non-essential outdoor water uses during excluding hand watering or drip irrigation between the hours of 5:00 P.M. and 8:00 A.M.?
I'm not sure that that's as clear as it could be. Are we banning it between?
I'm happy for a friendly amendment. We first.
Okay. Right. That, the kind of Manchester bans, non-essential outdoor water use with the exception of hand watering and drip irrigation of plants between 5:00 P.M. and 8:00 A.M.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote. John Round?
Yes.
Ryan Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bala, I guess. Anne Harrison?
Yep.
Becky Bates says yes. It's humorous. Thank you. Now we have committee interviews. And up first is Jeffrey Bobmer Turner for CONCON. Everybody had a chance to read his application? All right. Jeff?
Hi.
There.
If I can make an opening comment, I'm just thrilled that Max Warner is not interested in this, this particular opening.
Okay. I read your application, and it sounds like you certainly will be bringing a lot to this committee if you've been appointed. Anne Harrison, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Very impressive resume, a little short on botany. Or anything else really having to do with the purview of the CONCON. Could you speak to that?
Sure. I didn't load the resume with extraneous things. I've been very active in a number of conservation groups. I'm an active birder and have been in in National Audubon, Mass Audubon for 25 years. I have been a member of the trustees of reservations and other groups that conserve land and conserve water supplies. I see the primary task of the Conservation Commission in our town as administering two state regulations related to wetlands and the local bylaws related to the wetlands. I haven't sat in any committee working on those issues specifically. But I'm a pretty quick learner and I'm dedicated to putting in the time to getting up to speed with other members of the committee on the tasks that they are presented with. I've attended a number of CONCON meetings in the past few months, and I've had a lifelong interest in conservation.
Thank you very much. That's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Kathy Bala?
No questions, just a comment. I believe all, I'm a big believer in all committees and boards having diversity of thought. So after reviewing Mr. Bodnar Turner's application, what I believe he brings to the table is that that skill set of reviewing data for accuracy and applicability as well as, you know, CONCON is often involved with conversations on other committees and boards. There's a lot of boundary discussion, and he is well positioned to help all of the committees and boards stay aligned with their court charter and roles and responsibilities. So that's, that's really what I liked about his application.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Ryan Solace?
No, it's impressive. If anyone wants to step up. We're in that board, or in a lot of this. Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. John Round?
The CONCON is one of the two or three committees that I think needs a strong learner and a, I won't say necessarily a strong background, but you've got to have, have dedicated people on that committee that can get up to speed on issues in a hurry. Jeff's reputation receives him. He's had to get up to speed on a lot of issues fairly quickly over the past several years. And I have no doubt that he will do just that with all of the issues that are in front of the CONCON at home and will be for the next several years. So I endorse.
In that regard, Mr. Mr. Round, I look forward to the narrowing of the bandwidth.
Yes. Which is only an advantage, I think, to be able to focus on that.
Yeah, I'm sure it's narrowing the bandwidth. Steve Gang, Chair of CONCON, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Chair Gang.
Great. Appreciate the opportunity to endorse Jeffrey Bobmer Turner. He's spoken to me and I'm aware of his interest and his commitment, which are paramount. As you probably know, there's a bunch of basic and intermediate instruction that every commissioner is offered. And it is usually a bellwether that they're eager to take that. So I take his eagerness to enroll in those courses as a very good sign. And happy to answer any questions if you have them for me.
I'm all set. We're ready to vote. May I have a motion? Oh, wait, before we do, how long is the term? Is it, it's a three-year term? Is that correct?
It's a three-year term. Yes. It's filling a vacancy that expired 2020.
May I have a motion then?
I will appoint Jeff Bobmer Turner to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term.
I second that.
Wonderful. Okay. Roll call, vote. Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Bala?
Yes.
Ryan Solace?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky. And Becky Jake says yes. Welcome, Mr. Bodmer Turner. Thank you for putting your hat in the ring. That is a tough, tough mission to work on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we do not, Mr. Brown is unable to get good cell coverage tonight, so we are going to be, uh, relooking at that in a couple of weeks. So that brings to item number four, which is to reaffirm the vote of the to join the North Shore Regional 911 Center and to ratify the IMA. This is not an open hearing, so we are going, we're simply going to vote to reaffirm the vote as well as ratify the IMA. Has everybody read everything that we had? Okay, may I have a motion, please, to reaffirm the vote to join the North Shore Regional 911?
I move that we affirm our decision to join the North Shore 911.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
No.
John Round?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. So it is a 41 vote to rat, to reaffirm the vote. And then now to ratify the regional dispatch IMA. May I have a motion to ratify the regional dispatch IMA, please?
I'll make a motion to ratify. This is the, uh, IMA that was signed
Correct.
Thursday, I believe.
Last Monday.
Oh, last Monday. I'll make that motion.
Let me have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by John Round, seconded by Kathy Bellata, roll call vote. John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne Harrison? And Becky Jake says yes to ratify the regional dispatch IMA is unanimous. That brings us to, uh, actually we're ahead of time. So we've got five minutes before we can go to the open meeting law complaint. Um, can we pull out of the consent agenda approval minutes for July 5th and do that? Okay, does anybody have any questions on the minutes of July 5th? And were any amendments, if any needed? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 5th? 2022, please, thank you. Second?
Second.
Moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by John Round, John, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Okay, how about the Coast to Cure Bike Ride 2022? Any questions on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are they going to be happy going down School Street on a bunch of bicycles?
Didn't they change the route? I thought they modified the route.
Yeah.
That was a difference, see that? Yeah, that had a different route on it.
It was Mill Street. What I saw was Mill Street to School Street, to 127 and out. And.
They should go over Pleasant, down Pine or something.
Yeah, getting from Mill to Pine to Pleasant is.
So that stretches it as bad as the rest of it.
Okay, yeah, I, I'd just be better not to have them on broken roads.
Right. No, it's a good point.
I have to modify that. I was thinking about that as well and I didn't recall that that was.
Hi, this is Kim Trina calling. I'm from neurofibromatosis for the coast ride.
Uh, would you please, um, state your address as well, please?
Sure, 9 Bedford Street, Burlington, Mass.
Thank you very much, Kim. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, I'm hearing that there's some concern about riding on Mill Street. Is that what it is?
School.
Oh, School Street, okay.
It's under construction, so that's the concern.
A lot of, it's a mess.
Okay, and it will still be going on at the beginning of September?
Yes, unfortunately, but yes.
Okay, all right, um, okay, I'll have to bring it back. Um, so we don't, so we can't be riding on that street is what you're saying?
You can be, but you're not going to like it.
And it's not very, it's, it's much narrower than it typically is, so it's hard for two cars to go side by side, uh, passing each other, which would make it dangerous for you all.
Okay.
Yeah, come down Arabella or Lincoln, so you're only on it for 20, 50 yards.
Okay, so you recommend to go down Arabella and Lincoln, okay.
Yeah.
Um, may I suggest that, that perhaps, as Ann said, you look at another potential route?
And wait, if they went from?
No, Mill Street, they get on school, they'll go over the 128 and they'll have to take a left on Pleasant Avenue extension.
They're, they're coming down, I think one, they're coming down 127, some, they're coming down Summer Street and then Forest and Mill. If they just went down Summer Street and across on Lincoln and then around Arabella Pleasant Extension, they wouldn't be in the, in the construction at all.
That's the point I made. I don't know which way they're going.
They go straight across on Pleasant.
Yeah.
I'd go all the way around, just straight across on Pleasant.
Yeah, and then down, down Pine, back to 127.
That'd work too.
So do we actually need to weigh in on what the route is? I mean, they have.
No, just your, your request is to avoid School Street.
Yes, and, and, and work, work with Town Hall or the DPW to?
Work with police.
Police.
Yeah, work with the police.
Okay, Kim, did you get that?
So work with the police on the change to the route? Is that what you're saying?
Well, just, just work with them so that you can avoid the, uh, uncomfortable route.
Okay.
Yeah, School Street specifically.
Right.
Okay. Okay, great. So, thank you so much.
We approve have that in front of me.
Coast to the Cure 2022 Bike Ride.
Coast to the Cure 2022 Bike Ride, subject to the condition that they work with the police to avoid construction.
That is done. Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by Brian Solace, roll call vote. John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Unanimous. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And that brings us to 710 Open Meeting Law Complaint. Um, Greg, would you like to set this up?
Sure. So we received the formal complaint regarding the open meeting law violations of Robert Coyne. And, um, I can summarize, you know, the three primary parts of the complaint. The Select Board did not put the question of joining regional dispatch before the town meeting. And secondly, the Select Board did not obtain county approval to place a non-binding question on the annual election ballot. And then third, um, the allegation is that the public was deprived of the ability to comment on the June 21st, 22 Select Board, uh, meeting, um, on the dispatch issue. Um, so in, in your packet, uh, Town Council has prepared a response, um, for your consideration. And you can, um, review that tonight and see if you agree with the response. If you feel there are some changes to it, then you can make those edits. Um, but that would be the response that, uh, that she could submit on, on your behalf um, to, to the AG's office and to Mr. Coyne.
Did everybody, uh, read over what was submitted? Anybody have any comments on the, um, the response from Town Council?
So just, to summarize, um, the response, um, that it's, it's not a requirement that you, put the question to, to town meeting. Um, it's, it's like, would have the authority to enter intermunicipal agreements. And that's spelled out in state law, so she cites, she cites the law on that, that, um, provides that authority. Um, so that was item number one. Item number two, um, you didn't get town meeting approval to place a non-binding referendum. Again, there's specific statute that allows, um, select boards to put non-binding questions before the electorate. And so there's not a requirement to go, uh, first to town meeting. So that's the response to, um, to number two. And then, um, as, as the record shows and the tape shows that, that the public was able to comment on that your meeting, um, public comment was taken during the meeting of the 21st on the dispatch question, uh, before, before you took the vote. So that's, that's a quick summary of a, of a four-page letter that has a lot more detail, but that's the, that's the Reader's Digest version.
Okay, um, do we need to take a vote to accept her letter?
I have a couple of questions.
I'm just asking first.
But yes, you should.
I'll go to the board.
You would take a vote to, um,
Okay.
allow, well, Town Council to, to, um, submit the letter on your behalf.
No, don't worry. Everybody's doing good. No, but I'm, thank you for making sure that I wasn't just going right ahead with that. Okay, um, Anne Harrison, do you have any questions on this or comments?
No.
Kathy Bellata?
No.
Brian Solace?
I'm good.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion to approve Town Council submitting?
A specific motion that she wanted you to?
Oh, yes, I did. All right. Thank you. Um, I move that the board adopt the response to the OML complaint from Robert Coyne with the changes discussed at this meeting, which there are none, and authorize Town Council to send this response on the board's behalf.
So a second. Second.
Okay, so moved by Becky Jake, seconded by Anne Harrison, roll call vote. John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. That's unanimous. I do want to formally acknowledge receipt of the open meeting law complaint um, from Mr. Coyne. Okay. Next, we have Board Committee Updates.
So just, before we head, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the actual claims filed Manchester matters of Robert Coyne. And I just wanted to make sure that it didn't minister, uh, there's actually a group of us concerned citizens of both uh, process that we experience.
You should please state your address. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, Robert Coyne, 115 B Street. And, uh, I know I personally would like to reserve a comment until I have a chance to read the response from Town Council. I do appreciate this forum that you provided here. I'm sure we'll be back with this and you kind of what we feel is not covered.
Absolutely. Um, I didn't see that any, any name was on it but yours, Mr. Coyne.
I'm sorry?
I didn't see that anything else was on. Well, but on the original application of it. Um, as mentioned, I would say there were, there, there were some errors in it. You stated that Mr. Bodmer Turner and I, um, when in, in part, when you were saying who, uh, voted not to have it go to town vote?
Right.
It was actually Mr., um, Bowling and I. Forget that. It wasn't, it wasn't Jeff. It was Eli Bowling and I did that. Mr. Bowling?
I, I, I heard pretty, pretty well. I was quite materna. He's the one that voted no along with you. And, uh, Mr. Fettisfield, he was also, uh, in favor of it going to town meeting as well. And, uh,
Then I might, I must be thinking about something else, so my apologies. Thank you.
Accepted.
I'm sorry?
We, we can double check.
We can double check that, yeah, but, um, any other comments about the open meeting law violation that has been submitted? Mr. Skates?
I don't have a comment. I think that.
Please state your address. I'm sorry.
Well, Skates, I'm at 411.
Thank you.
And you've been very gracious and let me talk to you about this and what have you. But I think that the way this has been handled by your selectmen unleashed a lot of angst in the community. And it's like, if I invite you over dinner and say, would you like some chocolate ice cream? And you say, yes. I say, you can't have it. And so you went to a vote. I spoke to you. I said that one of the selectmen was quoted as saying, "We really shouldn't let this sort of vote of the town because, uh, they'll bring in a lot of people and, and sort of take over the vote." Well, that's a democracy and it's in a minute. And I think that that's really uncalled for behavior by a select person. If I were a high school teacher, I would say that's just not wrong with the democracy. People shouldn't do that because of your elected official.
Mr. Skates, does this pertain to the open meeting law?
As far as I'm concerned, it does, because this is an open meeting.
Yeah, but we're talking about a specific complaint that was made.
The specific complaint was that people weren't given a fair chance to speak. And I don't think that's right in a democracy. And I think it's, a lot of people in this town are really upset about it. Had it been handled differently, if you hadn't even taken it to vote, you wouldn't be hearing all this.
Right.
But going to a vote like that, the one by a clear majority, without a question.
Majority of 30, the percentage of the people who came to town vote. And that's why, you know, we have, let's be fair about the percentage of people who voted. It was a majority of those who voted, but not a majority of the voters.
And we have two select people here who got elected that basis. So are you saying they shouldn't be selected?
Not what I'm saying at all, but.
Well, that's, that's a blue draw in your comments.
Ron, first of all, I would like to say that I, I recognize, I recognize that this has caused pain. And I would also like to say that, that some of my responses and the way I have responded have sometimes come off, um, condescending, charged, um, and I'm not a politician. I'm a towns person like you all. I'm a volunteer who is now doing more than a full-time job trying to do the very best for this town that we all love. And, yeah, sometimes when I'm on the receiving end and I'm feeling like I'm attacked, my tone may not be the best. And I do apologize, but.
Well, I hope you didn't think I attacked you. We are a conversation.
No, no, not at all.
Because I'm very respectful of everyone here.
But I, I'm apologizing myself right now for if, if my tone seems to come off and I'm trying to think, I kind of slow it down and start looking and thinking. So if it comes off as condescending, that is never my intent. Again, I'm not a politician. I'm a towns person, just like any of you. Only I've been elected to sit here, so.
I certainly.
I would love if any of y'all would like to come on out here.
As an individual, I certainly accept it. I just think that a collective mistake was made.
I would agree.
Give me a cup of chocolate and take it away from me.
I, I don't, that's, I don't agree that it's an open meeting law violation. I, I don't agree with that. I don't necessarily agree with the analogy of what might have been said was, okay, we might be providing chocolate. If we were to provide a cup of, you know, bowl of chocolate ice cream, might you like some? That is, I think, a more appropriate analogy than, would you like chocolate ice cream? Oh, no, you can't have it. It would definitely fall forth as a non-binding vote. And anyway, um.
Thank you for letting me speak.
But thank you, Ron. Um.
Were you getting a copy of?
Just state your name again, please. Sorry, you know, you know the drill.
Yeah, there'll be, yeah, we'll get you the best one here, I don't know. But you'll get a copy.
All right, thank you. Yeah.
Brenda Furloin, 19 Ocean Street. Um, I'd like to offer a comment and a question, and it is related. Um, and I do hope that, uh, Sarah Merrillish is still on the Zoom call because a compliment to the CBA. Um, as you probably have noticed in the last few days, the CBA The Z B A has put up on the town website, a new tab. That lists all of the correspondence that they have been receiving about a particular matter. And I personally have found it extremely helpful. Um, I think it's very transparent, I think it's a wonderful addition to our town website. And currently, there's about a hundred and twenty letters, uh, on that tab. That you can sort through and read different opinions. There's also a petition there that is, I think, something like twenty-four pages. Um, but it's wonderful transparency and, and didn't seem to be an undue burden on the administrative staff. So compliment to the Z B A and a question to the select board. Are you willing to do the same thing? And are you willing to recommend to the other boards in town that they follow that example?
Funny you bring that up, Brenda, we were just talking about that exact thing Saturday at our retreat, um, retreat, right here. But, um, yes, we were talking about exactly that. And, um, so, good point, thank you for, you know, the shout out to Sarah and the Z B A, they, they really. Been doing yeoman's duty, but absolutely we are. And so, you know, any more suggestions like that, you know, these, that's very helpful.
So you are going to start posting the letters?
We're planning on, well, what we're planning on is getting, um, working on policies, getting those up to date. Letters typically are, and that's.
So I thought where we left off was we, because we have a follow-up to our retreat. So I know I have some actions out of that to provide some sample collateral and techniques, and I think other board members have some. Actions as well, so we're going to gather again, I think the date is August 25th. To finalize the type of, um, communication changes or to take the next step in the discussion, I should say, on the types of communication changes we could implement to better serve the town.
Well, I just, I just think, um, to be honest with you, um, I've been in town fifty-one years. And I've written a number of letters to, um, prior, um, for the selectmen. Uh, one, a couple of years ago, that was six pages in duration. And no one, my neighbors, myself, no one gets an answer, and no one even gets an acknowledgement. We don't even get a, a electronic response that says, thank you for your letter, we're going.
We brought that up, trying to make sure, because there, there are. And, and as I, Sarah, I'll get over to you in a second, oops, I mean Sarah, I didn't mean the honey. So. Where was?
You were, you were saying that we're going to get together on the 25th. And we are going to, that meeting is specifically about dealing with communications and transparency. And therefore, we're not going to tell you tonight that we're absolutely going to put the letters up because we're going to think about how best to do it. But we understand the frustration of sending a letter and not having any response and, and.
Yeah, and we want to do something.
We, we. I, I think that's more than acceptable, and that's certainly a good timeframe. And again, I just want to reiterate how, uh, wonderful the action and the initiative that the Z B A has taken has been.
Um, thank you very much, Brenda. Sarah Malish?
Yes, so Tiffany Maletta has updated our website, she has worked above and beyond. Her hours, I believe. And I think if we want that transparency across all boards, we will need a budget item to make her full time. Um, because she's done a marvelous job and it's, it's enormous numbers of hours, thanks.
I, I think one of the reasons why we are in, um, data information collection mode on this issue. Is because one of the other actions we took was to go look at what other towns are doing. So for example, some towns have a portal, you know, on a particular project or whatever, and. Um, residents can add their comments and you can see everybody's comments. So, um, I think we're all thinking that generally the same thing, it's just a matter of understanding all the lessons learned and best technique to use from Manchester.
Thank you. So we will be following it. Any other comments? Okay.
Excuse me, uh, can we roll back, just I have a question on the, uh, well, it started this whole, uh. Uh, discussion, and that has to do with the, uh, oh, the open meeting violation, okay? Is, is there a timeframe, when do, uh, when do you expect the state's response? Is there an expectation there?
Um. Yeah, I don't know that. I don't know if the state will respond if they don't have any further questions, they may just accept.
Just respond. Just filed, but there's no action, you know, there's no expectation of an action on the, on the county general.
Typically, you, if, if something, if they're not satisfied, there'd be follow-up.
Okay.
If they're satisfied with the response, then typically.
They, they close the.
They close it, yes. Yes, I'll, I'll double check with, with council on that. You would think that they would at least acknowledge receipt.
Right.
So, speaking of that, so, um.
Ironic.
Uh, well, I'll, I'll, I'll.
I'm just, I'm just curious as to.
I, I know that they would follow.
I guess the part of the question is, uh, if they don't, if this.
If they're not satisfied with the response.
If they're not satisfied.
They would, they would be back in touch with it within a couple of weeks.
And then.
Okay, next on the agenda, board and committee updates, and first up is water.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for coming then.
See you, Ron.
Okay. Say hi to Mary, Ron.
Cool, thank you.
Um. Okay, so next on the agenda is water resource protection task force. And so we have. Steve Gang. That looks like Ann, Tom, Theo vote. Uh, who wants to go first, Steve or Tom?
Mr. Gang is the chair.
Okay. Steve Gang?
Yeah, a one-page or a little more than a page of, uh, update. On our, uh, our progress as well as a kind of a reminder of, of how this. How this whole thing got going and what the scope and deliverables are. So I guess it's appropriate, um. To see if there are questions or reactions about that, or whether the select board would prefer me to. And with Tom's help, uh, work our way through that document for you.
Um, speaking for myself, I think I, I. Well, let's actually see, I, I'd like to see it have all the updates sent. If they're different from the last round we received.
So we have a two-page or in your packet?
That's, that's what I mean, if there's not anything else beyond what's in the packet.
Well, there is a little bit of detail that you might find useful because it's going to come before you shortly, so I'm happy to go into that.
Right.
So I think it might be helpful just to do a quick summary on what's on the. On the memo that you prepared, Steve, and then.
Okay.
Do a little deeper dive on the ones that you feel would, would warrant that.
Surely, so the memo, the memo reviews the background, which is that, uh, in early December of last year. Um, the then Board of Selectmen acting in its, uh, that capacity. And I guess also in the capacity as the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners. Uh, authorized the creation of this task force and gave us, um, membership slots to fill. And, um, uh. Generally, an acceptance of the, I believe, of the proposal we had made for an eighteen, up to eighteen-month tenure. For the task force and a set of objectives and deliverables. And I guess it's important to note that those deliverables were designed to. To get into the question of how does one implement change, uh, over the long term in areas concerning. Water quality and quantity. Well, because although we are very fortunate today. To be, uh, blessed with adequate supply, uh, that probably will not always be the case. And there are a lot of threats, uh, and some opportunities to, uh. To look at and consider. So we, we, um, the memo, the update reminds of, of the scope, the four deliverables. To update the problems and opportunities which were identified thirty years ago, more than thirty years ago in the nineteen ninety report by. Horsley Witten. And, um, to prioritize those problems and opportunities and do additional fact-finding on them in order to specify some next steps. Including where to spend money and time, how to organize, and what requires more detailed study over time. And then fourth and finally, the deliverable is to suggest, propose and recommend alternatives. For how to create responsibility and accountability, including the metrics to use to make sure that. We stay ahead of, uh, of these problems and enjoy the kind of situation. Uh, which was provided to us by people acting more than a hundred years ago in our behalf. Those of us on the task force kind of see our responsibility without being too, uh, too arrogant about it. To try to do again what those folks did.
Steve, I'm sorry, you're going, is anybody else having trouble, or is it just me? You're going in and out a little bit?
Oh, I apologize, all right, I'll try to holler. Anyway, we set up, uh, those, um, expectations, which, which you voted on in December. Um, we created a membership, uh, Tom, would you be good enough, if you have it in front of you, to go through the task force membership today?
Sure, yeah, um.
You know what, actually, hold on one moment, please.
We have, we have that sitting in front of us.
Right, right.
Please don't read it to me.
I, I, I think that more of. Say it again?
Just want to, we're at a good point.
Is it possible to get, I mean, we, we, we do have the list, and I'm very sorry, Steve. Um, we've got your membership here, and I guess. What we're. More interested is what you have specifically at this point?
Oh, we have worked.
An update from the last time we've heard from you.
Right, so we are working on this issue of, of, uh, long-term conservation. Under the first working group, which is on usage and demand. And without getting into too much detail, that group has built. A database that cleansed the marvelous, uh, account by account by quarter. Um, volume usage for the last ten years to, to, uh, eliminate duplicates. And consolidate people who have different variety of different kinds of meters, commercial or residential or other. So we have a working database from which to do analysis and modeling. We've checked in on the work, um, eminent work done by Eli Bowling a few years ago. To start the building of a model of demand and elasticity and substitution. And that should enable us to have, uh, a fact-based set of recommendations about long-term conservation. As you suggested when you, uh, voted. The latest rounds of, of, uh, rate increases last week. Um, on sources and supply, we're working hard on the question of, can we, uh, develop a third source? Is it economical? Will we need to? Uh, we're not talking about the next two or three years, we're talking about the next ten or thirty years. Um, the climate change group is looking at the results just emerging from the create. Uh, team, which, which was, uh, conducted along with EPA. To look at the effect of climate change on, among other things, our drinking water supply. So we'll have information from that. The quality and contaminants group has isolated a couple of particular concerns, which is rising levels of. Sodium and.
Steve, I think we might lost you. Steve?
I'm unmuted and I have a signal, can you not hear me?
No.
Now, now we can.
You're back.
The last word we heard you say was sodium.
Yes, sodium and PFAS, so the contaminants of concern, particularly in the Lincoln Street well. That team is looking at, uh, forensic sources of these contaminants, if they can be isolated and, and trying to take the long-term look. That's what's going to be required. Uh, for that. Uh, citizen awareness and engagement, um, has been. Preparing for a citizen survey, which will probably be launched in the fall when people's attention comes back to town and. And, uh, local issues. And, um. Mr. Keough, would you give us a, a synopsis of the sixth working group on responsibilities, authority, and accountability?
Yeah, sixth working group basically is, you know, who's responsible for what within the town. Um, whether it's the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners, the D P W. Um, and, and how, uh, how it's, everything is accountable, going back to those particular groups. Um, we're also, um, all these groups are working on putting together a timeline for their main tasks. Uh, group one has completed their timeline or has roughed it out at this time. And all the other groups are meeting within the next couple of weeks to continue working on their timelines. So when those timelines are all done, Madam Chair and members of the board. Then you will get a copy of those timelines, so you can see, um, what hopefully might get done prior to the town meeting. Uh, we're hoping that we'd be able to, um, come to you and ask for permission to maybe put some kind of a flyer. On our task out with the water and sewer bills at some point. And also, um, have a distribution of some information. Um, about the water and the water quality in the town of Manchester, uh, to pass out at town meeting. Um, we should also mention that, uh, you've already seen the list of members of the committee, but, uh, we would both be remiss if we didn't. Uh, mention the tremendous resource that we have in Chuck Damn and Nate DeRochers to, uh, work with us. And to research things and to find out, um, what, the answers that, you know, we need to find out from the town on that. It's, uh, they've been tremendously responsible, in fact, uh, all members of the, uh, group of the task force. Had a tour through the Lincoln Street well, uh, a tour up through the water treatment plant, uh, in Hamilton. And down to the pumping station on the side of, uh, Gravely Pond. Many of the members of the, uh, task force have also gone on a hike led by Jeff Cosan Chan around, um. The, the watershed up there, including Gravely Pond and looking over towards, uh, towards Round Pond.
Yes, thanks, Tom, and. Apropos of that, may I also mention that, uh, we have Scott Horsley and, uh, some of his team. Uh, working on questions that require geohydrological expertise. One of those is, where does the water come from that fills up Gravely Pond and Round Pond? Uh, there are not, uh, a whole lot of surface flows into Gravely, so we, we know it's quote, "spring-fed," unquote, by groundwater. But it's important to determine the direction of that groundwater, uh, both in terms of the nearby landfills, which are fairly rich in. Stuff that's toxic in drinking water, as well as the roadway, uh, Tobacco Road and, um. Possible future development in Hamilton. So, um. Scott Horsley has delivered to us a preliminary proposal for a very economical, uh, high-tech. Approach to measuring, uh, groundwater movement into Gravely Pond, which sounds like an excellent first step. And we'll be discussing that at our next task force meeting on August seventeen, and then coming before you. Um, probably with some proposal to spend some of the budget allocated at the, uh, at the annual town meeting. To, um, to authorize Horsley and his team to do some work. So stay tuned for that.
Thank you. Um. Any comments on the board, John Rounds? He's also on the task force.
Yes, I am, so all of this, well, thankfully, most of it is all familiar to me. And, uh, just, just about all of it, and I just have to reiterate that there are a lot of folks that are working very hard here. I think that, uh, at the next meeting that we have, and I'm not. I think that at the next meeting that we have, and I'm not sure when that will be. Okay, yes, that's for, that's for the the Water Resource Task Force, but the next time they come in front of us, there'll be concrete results that we'll be able to see. Right now, you've got kind of a a layout of what is being planned, and it's really starting to materialize now. I know it's, it looks a little kind of here and there, et cetera, but we'll, we'll really be getting down to concrete, specific results that we want from each of these six task forces. It will probably be, we'll have preliminary data from all of them for the next meeting. So.
Thank you.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Just to underscore, reiterate, emphasize the huge amount of work.
It is a lot.
Brian Soloty?
Claire is mine.
There you go. Kathy Bellata?
I just want to thank the team for all their hard work and the use or or your, I'm very excited about the presentation of a timeline with deliverables. I am thrilled and looking forward to seeing what you guys have to say in that areas.
And Harrison? Okay, I would just say thank you again, and regarding next steps, feedback on capital progress, organization process, timeline and deliverable, that's great. Scheduling and progress reports, excellent, and then advise on cooperation with Hamilton, Essex and Wenham. I just would like to reiterate that the task force is not given approval to reach out to other towns or organizations without first bringing it before the select board. I just wanted to reiterate that.
Would the, would the survey come in that, survey to the town come in that category that we would like to see the survey before?
I mean, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Certainly. May I ask one question? We're certainly, we're certainly not going to venture out, out of our remit here. However, we've been contacted directly by the Board of Health in Hamilton and asked for some information and assistance. How would you like us to handle that?
I think you fall under the offices of the select board, so that should probably come to the select board as well. Greg, what do you think on that?
Well, I guess it's, if they're looking for just sort of baseline information, I think it'd be fine for the passports to share what information they have. If they're looking for more of a recommendation or policy decision, then I think it'd be good to have the task force have a recommendation that to present to you that you would approve them giving to the Board of Health in Hamilton.
I would also suggest that if I, I agree with the concept of sharing what they have, but if they need to exert even one extra hour of work to fulfill a request or a suggested requirement from another town, I would say that has to come before our board because it's teams that are as large as this can easily be diverted inadvertently. So I'm a hundred percent on board with sharing what we have, but trying to fulfill somebody else's requirements that may not be part of their core charter, I would be a little bit
Well said. Thank you, Kathy. When we accept that completely, there's so much work to do.
There's four other people on the board who may have a different opinion.
I would say, in addition to that, even if it is a simple bit of exchange of information, I think that town administrator and Debbie and select board should be CC'd on that, just so that we're in the loop and we know what's being discussed and shared. Does that sound reasonable?
Certainly easy to do, and we will do it. I, I would ask a favor in return, which is while it, while there's plenty for us to do within the town lines, it's very clear to us that long term solutions are going to require greater collaboration with Hamilton, probably Essex and Wenham as well, because the solutions will be to problems we share down the road, the use of the watershed. So the favor I would ask is, could you do what you can to open up those channels of communication, which appear from where I sit to be a little bit constricted and closed with reference to Hamilton after our vote on refusing the land swap to relocate tobacco and our consternation over their plan to pave it in place?
Okay, we have to be a little careful of that, that's not on the agenda. So what I would say is in terms of the task force and recommendations that would be made to the select board that would extend, some of those recommendations are then also to reach out to other communities. That makes sense?
In other words, you, you wouldn't want to do anything until we make formal recommendations to you? Do I understand that?
Yeah, if I may, some of the things that we need to do, we need to gather some information in order to make those recommendations. And so that would precede the recommendations themselves, but I think that the task force will certainly keep this group informed, the select board informed, if that, when and when and if that needs to be done. I won't say if, when it needs to be done.
Well, and that, it's one thing to reach out to another community asking for information. It's another for the task force to reach out with recommendations prior to those coming before the board.
This would be the, we're looking for information, we're not looking.
But I would say, yes, absolutely, but I think the board does need to be CC'd as the either, probably Debbie and Debbie could give it to Greg if need be. Greg, what do you think? Do you need to be, do you want to be CC'd or let it go to Debbie?
That'd be fine. Yeah, I would. Gathering information, I think, is is fair game for the, for the task force to do. And just keeping, keeping everyone appraised of what we're, what information they're seeking and gathering. So it's just, it's just to give those open, open lines of communication.
Super well.
So one more place is
slightly concerned that in controversial areas and land use and water are always controversial in I don't want Manchester to be seen as trying to interfere with the internal politics of Hamilton or any other town. And in having a, one of our boards support one of their factions without understanding the whole picture of their politics is is worrisome.
I, I agree. I, my personal recommendation would be, I'd like to see this timeline of the town, of the task force's activities and the deliverables and the outcomes they expect to achieve, and where they need information from other towns, or what whatever barriers they may have to completing their tasks and their timelines. It could be information from other towns, it could be something else. They, they communicate that to us as part of that presentation, and then we will be fully informed as to what they need, when they need it. And I, is that possible to show us at our, you know, a, a meeting within this month? I mean, is, how quickly can that be done?
Well, they're, they're meeting on the seventeen, we're meeting on the fifteenth. Greg, so with that, with that communication, the types of questions, and this is, you know, to be creating more levels of, of, of more points of contact and questioning, but is that something best as the select board person reaches out to another select board and then reads out to the proper board? I mean, that just seems humble, but we don't want, as the point has been made, we don't want to step on toes or offend. Maybe we need to think on this a little bit.
Or is it the one town administrator to another? Right? I mean, I, I think.
This is where I'm very reluctant. I mean, we don't need to put any more on that. That, you know, you can't even.
Happy to facilitate that, that, you know, sort of my level of my colleague in another town, that often that often is helpful.
Yeah, I mean, it just for, since we don't have any specifics about who in, or what areas might need to be contacted in these other towns, I immediately went to suggest Greg. But if there's a particular core area and it's, you know, Chuck Dams counterpart in, in Hamilton, I'm sure they have a relationship already. I'm just wondering if this is an operational detail that the gathering of information that the board doesn't really have to get involved in at all.
Well, and to that point, I mean, you, you don't want that, that sort of seeming bureaucratic quagmire that just guns it up or slows it down. And then John, you know, sitting over there biting the tongue.
Yeah, I, I am. And we, we need to sit down with Chuck with regard to the specifics there, because the groups that he interacts with, I wouldn't be surprised if quite a few questions that we're sitting here asking, he knows because he informally speaks with these people pretty frequently.
Right. So we might not.
So there might be just very few pieces of information that we've really got to thread a needle with, but the rest is kind of general knowledge that has been just exchanged over the various meetings and that. So we need, we, we need certainly to go down that path.
And would that be something just board, board, like sewage water or VPW to DPW kind of thing, or is that?
Oh, so I think, so the task force has their groups. They may have specific questions or information needs. Sue Croft is the staff support to, to the task force, so she can assemble those information needs, and she and I can discuss who and which department might be able to get that information quickly and easily for, for the task force. So I don't think that, that doesn't need to go before this group and all of that.
And then the point you made, the Saturday thing.
You don't need to know.
Right.
You don't need to.
So, okay, good.
So, yeah, I, I don't want to over overly complicate this.
As it is, it's clever smart.
Okay. Steve, did you want to say one more thing on that before we move on?
Oh, just thank you. Thanks for the advice and thanks for the support.
Thank you for your time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Steve, very much. We'll walk it behind, gentlemen. Next up is update on the Affordable Housing Trust. I can't talk. Muffin, I think we have Muffin here, there you are.
Hi, everybody. So we're on the agenda tonight to just
Muffin Driscoll, the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I apologize. So we're on the Affordable Housing Trust is on your agenda tonight, just to provide you an update in terms of the RFP that the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Authority have been working on since beginning of February. We've met twice a month since then, and through the hard work of Sue Brown, our planner, and members on the trust, John Foyback and Chris Only, have put together the RFP. It has been passed by and through Town Council at least two, maybe three times, and with their assistance, made some adjustments. So it's, we are hoping that we can get it on the central register sometime around the date of August fifteenth. So through Greg, I'm, I believe he included the RFP in your packets, and we just kind of wanted to update you on where we were.
Excellent. You all have been working on this more than since February, but this particular aspect, so I'm very excited. Any questions from John Round, any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question. I looked through the packet, Muffin, and certainly affordable housing is, is a key part of this initiative. Just kind of blue skying ideas, is it possible that one might solicit some, some forty B developer, not that I want to dredge that up. But as, to kind of help with that, in other words, might they play a role in the development, in particular, say Pleasant Street, that?
That, that is, it is a possibility, John. Hard to know who's going to be interested until we can get it out on the street in the form of that RFP.
Seems to me it might make sense. We'll see.
It's our starting point to hopefully have a conversation with a developer or two, or maybe more than that.
Yep.
Brian?
I just want to echo, I think that forty B in this application.
Kathy Bellata?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with these two. I think we might need to go down that road, but it's just good to keep it as, and, you know, in our back pocket if it's needed.
Right.
The other thing is so the RFP, I thought was excellent, really comprehensive. Couple of points I just wanted to mention for your consideration as you you know, hopefully get some responses back. Actually, a question first, the timeframe by which we might actually start to build or renovate something, is it two to five years, you know? What's the timeframe we're really talking about?
Right, well, that truly is hard to know until the conversations can begin with a developer. And of course, the other piece is there will need to be a town meeting vote in terms of use of the Pleasant Street property
Right.
before anything really would advance.
So I'm just asking, best and worst case, though.
I, you know what, I, I, I would not want to put I, I, I just, I, I, I think until we can get it out on the street and see if there's even a response to the RFP, it would, yeah.
So what I would ask then, since the, we don't know what the timing is, I would ask us to be very future oriented in our assessment of the RFPs, and a couple of things I didn't see mentioned, I have to mention it because it's my background, and that's technology and electric vehicle charging. So these places would be built for five or 10 years, God knows when, we can expect, you know, we want to make sure that the cell signals are great because you know, you're not going to be relying on wired Comcast type connections. You'd want to make sure that there were electric vehicle charging options, just some things. Those are just two examples of being future oriented, as well as I, I was really happy to see the sustainability and the, and the lead checklist in there. I thought that was great, but that would be my comment.
Absolutely, thank you.
To the resident who's got their hand up, I'll come back to you after the board's had an opportunity to speak, but I do see that you are there. And Harrison?
Well, I echo the recommendation that that we seriously consider a friendly forty B. Forty B's got a bad reputation in town at the moment, but we have had earlier forty B projects that have benefited the town a lot. And a friendly forty B would, would overcome my reservation about this RFP, which is that it, it's clear that it's market rate housing will be a major part of the Pleasant Street, and we might find ourselves without a forty B moving actually backward on our, on our subsidized housing inventory if this plan goes forward without increasing the number of affordable, actually affordable units. Whereas with a forty B, we could count the market rate units in our, in our SHI, John, so.
Understood.
To, to improve the reputation of, of the forty B laws in town, but
on a reputable.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, and it would be, it would be nice if this project, in addition to renovating housing that desperately needs it, also increased the
Sure.
Yeah, we, I hope we can create more units where there are already units, and it would be nice to be able to count market rate in the SHI and just get the pressure off the pad.
I would like to say obviously shows a lot of work, and I, I appreciate obviously shows a lot of work. I I I appreciate the tie-in between the uh uh market rate and renovation of um what we have. It's not, well, vast improvement, so. Um, Muffin, did you want to say anything else to?
No, no, I'm all set.
Okay, then to the resident with the hand up, if you would please um lower your hand and state your name and address, please.
Uh, great. Sandy Rogers, Old Essex Road. Question for Muffin, I guess.
What number of Essex, Sandy?
Hello?
The number of Old Essex?
Eighty-two Old Essex Road.
Um, and the chair will allow that.
Great. Um, question is, is the RFP current currently visible for residents to look at? And or if not, when it is finalized, where will it be?
So it is currently not available because we're at the um selectments meeting tonight, just looking for their any last minute feedback. I would imagine that once it is um publicly posted on the central register that we can, we would provide that RFP um as a link on the Affordable Housing Trust site on the town website.
And so there's not going to be any review with abutters to any of the properties before you put the RFP out?
No.
Okay, and where is the central register that you speak of? I don't know where that is.
Right, and and I'm going to ask Sue Brown to answer that question, our town planner. Sue?
So that's a um, it's an online publication that lists all um RFPs, requests for interest, requests for proposals. Um, happy to, if if you Google that, you will, you will find it. Um it's not a, it's not a location as such, except on the web.
So it's for Massachusetts?
Yes, it's it's for Massachusetts, where all municipal contracts go.
Okay.
And others.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sue.
As an agenda item, the the draft is in your packet, which is posted on the website. So that that draft is
There you go.
is is part of the uh PDF that is part of tonight's agenda package.
It's on the link, Sandy. You should be able to. Did you try to click on the um agenda packet?
Yeah, no, I didn't click on the agenda packet. I was just looking at the Housing Authority site to see if I could find it, so I'll look at that. Thank you.
Give it a try on the um on the packet, okay?
Fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Muffin. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you very much, Muffin. Um, and please thank everybody at the on the Affordable Housing Trust as well.
Sure, Will.
Thank you. Um, up next, we have Western Woods Upgrade Room. Sue Brown?
Hi, cute. Thanks for um having me come and provide an update on this. Um I think Greg sent around a a quick um review, so you might have something in front of you now, and I won't read it, but I will just go over the three general initiatives that are going on in the Western Woods as part of our thought, our idea that um we would like to preserve that um general area. Um, what isn't on that and what you already know, I think, but maybe some folks that are listening might not know, is that for some time the town has been um doing research in that area to understand how many parcels, who owns the parcels in the Western Woods. Um, five years ago, we um knew a lot less about the Western Woods and the ownership, but um through some great research um with funding from CPA, um we now know that the town um owns a fair amount of land in there um that we previously may not have been aware of and that we previously didn't manage as such as open space. So once we found out that um we were a principal landowner there um and knowing that the other principal land over in the Western Woods is Manchester Essex Conservation Trust, um we know that, I don't know, maybe two thirds of the land in the Western Woods um has an opportunity to be preserved. So a couple of years ago, we started down the road of um understanding what that would mean and soliciting community input on it. Um, and here we are. So the three initiatives that um are underway now are um is a forest management plan. Um, we have been trying to do this for a couple of years now. I've got installed a little bit um from lack of work from a previous forester, but we now have a new forester on board. Um, he was boots on the ground today, in fact, um and he will be um looking at all town-owned land in the Western Woods, um documenting the resource values, um mapping it, and in the end, coming up with um a series of recommendations um for land management based on the community's goals. Um, I see Patrice is on from MECT, so I'm going to um give a little shout to say that um we're hopeful that MECT will run a similar process uh because technically we can only um do the lands that we control. We can only um report on those lands that we control, and um we're hopeful that MECT will um run a similar process so that we have a a plan that covers both. And we're hopeful that the recommendations come out um will really show a unified approach to that um roughly five eight hundred acres in in the Western Woods. The other thing that we're doing and that is underway is the Open Space and Recreation Committee um receives funding from the CPA to do um deed research um in particular to identify um public rights of way into the Western Woods. We know that, we believe that some exist, and we believe that over time some are um being lost as um as land changes hands, um um houses get built, and I think rights of way may um be lost. And so we're doing, um, we've hired a um a researcher um to um to research. We're starting with about twelve um parcels, and we're checking to see, she's checking to see if there's deeded rights of way into Western Woods. As we find them, if we find them, and as we find them, we would like to make sure that they're documented, that they're signed, um and then they're properly managed so that they stay open um forever. The third thing um that we're doing in the Western Woods is um we have a um an active um stewardship partner with Cape Ann Trail Steward to um regularly um walk the paths and provide trail maintenance. Um, and they also do um identify projects that might be done, and I think I listed just a few things that they've done in addition to regular trail maintenance and reporting back to us on any issues. Um, they've um laid um maintained, better maintained some trails, the yellow trails in there. Um, and they just recently um provided a kiosk um that we hope to put at the um at the Crooked Lane um entrance, at the end of Crooked Lane. Um, and we really want to use that kiosk to provide information to the um to the community members who use that trail and others um talk about the fact that these trails do pass over both public and private lands. Um, and, you know, talk about how to treat those lands and to be respectful. So um we see it as a good opportunity to um to provide some information there. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Sue. Um, John Round, do you have any questions?
Um, just I guess I guess an observation. I'm I'm looking at all of the information here, Sue, and you've got a lot of things under uh underway here to kind of uh um make this, make this space more useful, I guess, to the townspeople. I've only been in there once in the past twenty years, but I plan to go back here, I think, fairly soon and find out more about what's going on. Uh, I see that a a lot of the land here, it's, what does it says, owner unknown, or I can't quite read all of it.
Other owner.
Other other owner, something like that. This is all pretty much landlocked land, so it's really can't have any, any, any other use. Um, is that all kind of part of your plans? You're obviously, we're obviously collaborating with the MECT. Um, but are there any, any, any uh plans for those lands incorporating that into what's there, or has there been talk with those owners at all, or?
Thank, thank you for that question, John. Uh, yes, so there are a number of lands that are privately owned. I have sent out some time ago when we were first getting ready to do the forest management plan, I um sent a letter to all the landowners just to let them know what we were doing, what we're hoping to do long term, and letting them know that if they had any interest in selling, that we would certainly, or providing um trail access or CRs that we would love to talk to them. So the long-term strategy would be to um to own or um have CRs on as many of the properties as that we can, so that we can maintain the existing um and expand the trail system in there. So acquisition either in fee or, as I said, a CR or a trail easement is certainly part of the long-term plan. I expect that as we finish the um the land management plan, that some recommendations will come out of that, including maybe targeting the ones that maybe are most important to maintaining the trail system. But yes, acquisition.
I'm sorry, Sue. I was just going to say, CR is conservation restriction.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, Cali?
I'm good. Much as good.
Kathy, Kathy Ballata?
I have no questions.
And Harrison?
No question.
Okay, thank you very much. And uh, looks like Patrice Mercy Murphy from Met would like to speak. Uh, go ahead and put your hand down and unmute yourself, Patrice.
All right, I'm Patrice Murphy from Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. We like to call it MECT rather than Met. Uh, we're thrilled that the town is interested in uh more conservation in this area. And we have not acted on the forest management plan, although Sue has provided us all the information. It's more a matter of priorities and goals at this time uh for our organization. So we'll be taking a look at it, and uh we we have considerable interest in this area as well.
Thank you, Patrice, and thank you for um stating the preference of MECT. Okay, um that takes care of board and committee updates and brings us to Sand Dollar College discussion. Um, Greg, would you like to start this off?
Sure, so, um, you know, Sand Dollar Cove has been a topic of conversation off and on for a number of years. Um, the challenge is how to uh keep the area safe and available for folks to use. So how do we manage it without over managing and restricting people's uh freedom of use? So that's a balancing act. And one that um doesn't flow, if I can use that phrase in this case.
Look at that.
Uh, uh, so a couple of weekends ago, um, there were two events out on the water that created quite, quite a crowd. Um, I let Brian and Todd uh speak, speak to that. Um, a lot of boats, a lot of people um more than than our staff could really handle and manage safely. So that that just raises concerns. How how do we continue to to um manage the area uh with what's with the large crowds that we are attracting on occasion? Um, so that's, that's the question before us. Uh, I'm not expecting to solve that tonight. Um, but sort of tee it up for future conversations. Um, we do have some um short-term um efforts that have already gotten in delay that um both the chief and Harvard Master can speak to. I'll let them do that. Um, but it also, I think, requires a longer conversation at a future meeting to decide whether or not we need to revisit uh the topic of creating a day-use mooring field out in the area um that would have a certain cap on the number of boats that could tie up and use the area. Uh, but that's, that's a discussion for another night, not not tonight, but I just wanted to put it out there because it is something that has been talked about in the past, and I think probably needs to be brought up again for conversation. Um, but let me turn it over to both the chief and Harvard Master. They can give you a little more of that flavor of what it was like out there a couple of weekends ago, and then some of the short-term measures um that they've been able to implement, and um some thoughts on going forward.
Yeah, you were out there learning that. So I'll, I'll uh tell you that we had at least equal to, actually greater than the not greatest number of boats we ever had on each. Uh, it's three hundred plus boats. The average that I use is four people per boat, which would mean twelve hundred people out there. And it's my understanding that people were being shuttled by boat from land out there, so the number was uh probably higher. A lot of the people I I heard from afterward was, oh gee, you know, it's a huge crowd, but we didn't see any real problem. A lot of that perception comes, I think, from the efforts of the staff, police and fire, uh Harvard. Sorry, uh, in the two boats out there slowing traffic down. It's a very conscious uh effort on our part. I believe strongly that boats going slowly uh as they enter into the mooring field at the anchorage uh makes it just that much safer rather than the boats racing in potentially in amongst the the huge crowds at the beach. Uh, there is a uh last year, there were uh swim boys put around the beach to help keep the boats away from the beach. Massachusetts has a law, no boats within a hundred and fifty feet of the beach, public or private use for swimming. So those boys were very helpful. About three thirty in the midst of huge volume of traffic coming and going, I got called from dispatch that someone uh had called in and asked that we go over and remove floats and very large number of boats that had moved themselves into the swim area uh or inside the swim area and on private docks, at a gale's point, using private property as part of their event. So we're over. Wasn't the best.
What was the response?
It was.
What was the response you received?
It was the first time I've ever been in Manchester.
And then how many tickets did you issue?
Uh, none.
None.
None. So my goal was to get compliance. Let's get the boats out of there. But for me to start writing civil violations in that environment all by myself wouldn't wouldn't have been a good environment for a civil police officer to be writing tickets out there. So there were not, not one. So uh after that, um as I understand it, there were phone calls made to town hall. There was lots of underage drinking over there, which I have no enforcement authority over. Also have no enforcement authority over trespassing. The only thing at that moment that I I believe I could have enforced, which I did, was the boats in the swimming area. And had it been a safe enough environment, I could have done safety checks on every one of those vessels. But it was not. So I did not recline the boats out of the swimming area to make it safe for those folks who who wanted to access the beach from.
I would just like to say, I'm very sorry you were treated that way. I'm appalled at that behavior. That's just, it's not okay.
Well, I was pretty upset, but not at the doing, the fact that people did it. I didn't take any of that personally.
Oh, okay.
But then.
All right, man.
Uh, the uh, the other boat was out there as well. As we know, the orange boat, its mission is a little bit different. We have. We have the eastern specifically for accessing that part of our water. It was maybe a couple of feet deep. I was able to go into the eastern, our new yellow boat. The orange boat couldn't get in there. Just it couldn't. And to be honest with you, when it's that crowded, we don't like to go in there. Just because of the risk, the people in the water, number of boats, the anchor lines everywhere. That would have been a great shot on Facebook if either one of the boats had snagged an anchor line. With us hanging over the back of the boat trying to. So there does become a point where going in there, even with the vessels we have, is questionable decision.
There's no shortage of shots from above and other points at what. And fire.
And I'm sure I have a procedural question. Yeah, so did the company that sponsored the event? Okay, did they have permission from the Coast Guard?
So there were two events. Marine Max, the boat dealer, had a Coast Guard permit. I went back because I thought I remembered that the other event was also permitted. And I found the communication from the Coast Guard about the other event, which was the larger of the two. And the Coast Guard determined that the event, let's see. The event does not meet requirements for issuance of a Coast Guard marine event on that. Yes, exactly.
Do you have a copy of what permit was submitted? I'm curious.
So we don't get copies of those permits. No, Coast Guard gets these requests. Are required that every, we, we have now had a half dozen different events in the harbor since I've been here. Most start out with, they show up and they do it. And then I tell them, no more events until you make your request to the Coast Guard. Coast Guard will reach out to us and tell us if they issued permit, which they did with Marine Max.
So we don't get, we don't get a say before they issue the permit? That sounds a little backwards.
Well, I think we have great line of communication with the Coast Guard. In fact, the chief reached out to Gloucester Station, not the issuing station. That comes from Boston, but the chief was able to set up a meeting with Chief Bridges, the rent station. And so myself, and we all sat down. Coast Guard agreed that for the balance of the season, they're going to send the boat down on Saturday or Sunday during the height of our, our weekend day. And again, that's it. Again, their, their staffing, yeah, you know, with obviously the thing of their staffing and weather.
So that's nice, but my question is really about, I'm trying to follow the lines of accountability. And have we called up Marine Max and Dan Burris and said, hey, you know that the event you sponsored caused us a problem and we had to exercise this many hours of manpower? Here's the, here's the bill.
So they originally advertised the event and were refused to get a permit. And I held their fee requirements that don't show up without permit because that would be removed. So they did get the Coast Guard permit. Did, did get word of the permit. I think going forward, and the chief and I have talked about this. We're going to ask the Coast Guard to have additional requirements. Notify the town, we must get a town permit and probably, potentially, probably also police detail. Which love to pay for an officer, vessel, vessel operator. To be out in the area. So that's sort of, those are the things that we'll be telling the Coast Guard. We need in order for them to issue their permit for events going forward in Manchester. So the two events overlap. All right, because I was smacked up in the middle of the event. And so, and I, from what I observed. He's blown his spine. I wasn't aware of the other issues that you've just spoken, spoken to. So what was the other event? The.
Like Acapallosa, you know.
Where was that? Marine Max is a boat dealership up on North One. Theirs was further out the harbor and you could see theirs because they had those flags that looked like feathers on the back of the boat. Sort of compliments of events.
So that, that event by on was not near the other event?
They did not violate the swim area.
So it was the other event that encroached on private property?
There was plenty of drinking at all events. There was a lot of drinking at that beach. And there was lots of underage drinking at that beach.
And a lot of pollution, like from what I've been told, like a lot of garbage left. Not only on shore, but in the water.
So I still have questions around the accountability. So, so Marine Max, you know, all the boat dealers do this. They just, Marine Max does North Shore and Boson does Acapallosa. And you got, you know, they all do their thing, right? So, but it sounds like you've got a good trail for the future to try and you know, prevent something like that from the Marine Max standpoint. But what about the private event? Is there any accountability there? Was, was there pollution? Was there something that was a, a finable offense or something? How do we hold these people accountable? Because without that, you know. I don't know what we're talking about.
I'm less inclined to do the look back and do, you know, the on-chair Monday morning punishment. I would much rather come up with a plan to prevent it from happening ever again. So I, I, the chief and I are talking specifically about the steps to take. First up, the chief took, he reached out to the Coast Guard and said, hey, we, we had this problem. It's, that was an over the top problem, but this area is, it's overrun almost every week. And because of this meeting the chief set up, we're getting a little bit of help from the Coast Guard. Which translates into, we don't know when these guys are coming, so we have to behave a little bit better. That's, that's sort of a, this year right now, quick fix while we put in place the next steps with the Coast Guard. And then what the town wants to do with managing the events and the towns in general. Yeah, I think my suggestion would be similar to what we do with the Paxton Records, have a special event town, have a special event permit. And then you as a board would.
So that would, would, did that directed towards like the private party that happened? Yes, okay, good, all right. Yes, capture both, right. Okay, so that's good. My other question is, have you called the harbor master and hall to see what they do? Because it's just like World's End, right?
World's End, Hall Situate, Acapallosa. The, I talked to the harbor master about the Acapallosa of Pedix. That is a hundred and seventy-five boats. So by way of comparison, on Sunday, the after the event, I was called over. I was going through Sand Dollar Cove. It's called over by a boat of Gloucester. And the voters on, on the vessel said to me, so we were here yesterday and we were at the greasy pole. And what happened here was wilder, scarier than what happened at Greasy Pole. Again, the greasy pole as well with force, with Coast Guard, fire, police, Gloucester. And the harbor masters, they have all kinds of assets out there.
So Todd, officer who was on call. What was that officer's?
He was on the orange boat.
Oh, so he couldn't get in?
He couldn't get in there, correct. So if, if we take a look back at why we have two boats out there on the weekends. The reason I requested a second boat is not just because of the area itself. It's because the folks east of us at White Beach, Black Beach, Hell Cove, Magnolia. Those folks said to me, you aren't doing a job. You're not coming up here. You're not dealing with our issues. And I said, the greater problem is here and I have one boat. So that second boat works back and forth between, actually both boats do sort of working in tandem. I believe to this day that the reason we haven't had a propeller strike, a horrible accident at Long Beach is because we stop people at the no-wake. Skip Crocker said to me today, you know, it's interesting to look when there's no boat right there, even on a busy weekend day. Eighty-five percent of the boats hit those no-wake buoys, slow down.
Can we extend them out further?
Well, we do will be. I, I've got them out all the way to the end of the channel. So the washing machine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is out there and it's away from the anchor vessel until the weekend like last. When boats were anchored almost to half that rough, half that.
Um, John, did you have any questions?
Yes, I, I, I mean, the one thing that concerns me here is the Coast Guard, these organizations know they have to get permits from the Coast Guard. And I, I, or I assume that they do.
They don't all know.
They don't all know, but they do. But it concerns me that the Coast Guard doesn't tell the community that's involved. And that, I mean, that should be, seems to me, you're gonna have to chip away at this a little bit at a time. That's, that's gotta be number one, so that you know something's going on. Now, you can intervene in whatever way and we can talk all night about that, but we need to know that something's going on. Is, did the Coast Guard say anything about, well, this is the way we, we do it? That doesn't, that just doesn't make sense to me.
So we did get a single email from Coast Guard about the Marine Max event, day or two before the event. So again, this goes to when we communicate with them, communicating in a timely manner. To give us time to make sure all the pieces are in place.
You think they advertise like more than a month.
Is there, is there, uh, uh, an apply-by date for a permit? Can someone, some five days before?
They just supposed to fly, I believe, three months in advance. I, I, I've been to, so our misery challenge, when I told Josh that it's not happening again without your marine permit. He started, I think, five months before, we were going to meetings in February with Coast Guard. But that, because of the rowing, the paddling and swimming, that rules to a very high level. Coast Guard respected. The first year, they sent the boat. When we do the fireworks, it's nine, six months out. So I think, I think a lot of it has to do with how big of an event it is from their perspective. So I, I think it's, it's going to be on us to help them understand that this is exacerbating. It's just a problem. I mean, to a, a place where it's not uncommon to have upwards of two hundred boats on a weekend with no events. Eight hundred people with no events. That's a lot of people. About that many people in Mass can all park.
Did the officer who was there want to speak?
No, he, I talked to him and he was basically said, you know, they were enforcing the no-wake zone and couldn't, couldn't get in there. And he, like, he basically said he was one person and with all of the people, it'd be very difficult to.
I, I thought that boat always had two people.
It did. Had a harbor master, one of his assistants.
Okay.
A boat doesn't, a boat doesn't patrol or perform any activity other than maybe going to get fuel or doing a maintenance run with less than two people. There's no way that boat would be on a weekend with one person. I just think it's, if we can have you guys approve a town special event permit, it would give us time. And again, it's gonna go back to my, my staffing issues with the quality, with the quality-trained officer that's trained up on the boat. So and like, I, I look up, we've only been able to staff four times this year. Fortunately, that was a day. The, the orange boat was actually, when I got the call from dispatch, the orange boat was doing a patrol through the beach as close as it can be under Navy at the time. Impossible for that boat to go where I was. Different, different.
Were you alone?
On the yellow boat? Oh, yeah. That boat goes along almost on us, unless we have a young person who's training. Then a lot of times we'll take that one.
Generally, that seems, but when you know that there are two events that are going to happen.
I didn't have. I didn't have the staff to have two people on that boat that day.
So this is staffing as well. I mean, it's, it's staffing, sort of public safety staffing.
So, well, you need to on the water, correct?
So in the future, if, as chief says, there's a, an event application potentially exists that we could have denied one of them. Okay, instead of that, what's happening going on right now? Pick another date.
All right, Kathy, sorry.
Yeah, no, I just, I was following up and wanted to clarify what you said. This was about on, on the water staffing. Under the harbor master's budget, not necessarily. From the police department.
Police officers are paid from a sum of money that's in my budget.
So, because what I was getting at was the financial trail here. So if staffing became something we had to discuss during the budget season, where would that money come from? Like mooring fees or waterway fees or as opposed to general taxation, et cetera? Because this is a problem that is unique to certain folks. That was one line of thought. The other question was, is this an, we can't be the only ones dealing with this. So what does the harbor master in Beverly has to say or, you know, Gloucester? Is there an opportunity for some cooperation? Yeah, mutual aid, except that's the right phrase for it.
Yeah.
Or planning, you know, because if, if Marine Max comes to Manchester and we say, no, they're gonna go to Beverly or they're gonna go to Gloucester, and we're just moving the problem around, right?
Right, right. So if, if in conversation with other harbor masters, all harbor departments are in the same boat as we are. It's extremely hard to find staff. We, we have, we're lucky, we have great staff. And three people is generally all we'd ever need for a weekend day. Or if, if we're going to do the technical enforcement, we should not do making sure the beaches are being appropriately patrolled east of here. And we're managing the no-wake. As far as what happens at Long Beach, there's always been minimal amount of direct in amongst the strong management of what goes on there. We are reactive. We'll get calls from property owners who will say, there is a boat on the beach. Well, then we immediately go in because we're not gonna turn into Linger Sheen. We're not gonna turn into Crane's Beach. We're not gonna have Manchester become one more community where people can't go to the beach safely because of boats on the beach. And so, but we're reactive. We're not a lack.
Well, and, and these are posted private properties. So these are, these are people trespassing on private properties when you're in Long Beach and Sand Dollar Cove, those beaches. Sand Dollar Cove, those beaches.
Have there been other events that, I mean, we're in two thousand twenty-two, Sand Dollar Cove's been there a long time. Have there been other events that you've been aware of? Um, perhaps after the fact, obviously, none of them created this kind of problem, but.
Very first one out there was a concert, uh, some folks marble head organized. And uh, I found out, I, I'm lucky, I have people call me, hey, buy on Facebook, it's gonna be a concert on Labor Day. So, and I got a phone number and I called with the boat on. Being a leader, I said, you're gonna call the Coast Guard to get a permit. Got it, so uh, it was eleventh hour, but they uh made phone calls and. Coast Guard called me and I I said, you know, not without your permit, they can't do it. Well, we're gonna issue a permit and we'll stand by in case you need help, weather wasn't great that day. So it was a concert, we're probably a hundred and seventy-five boats. Uh, and then this other. Musical gathering with the Gloucester Koreans and the. Uh, has happened two or three other times, but after. Only with the Coast Guard permit, you know, them reaching out to get a permit and then. Didn't need one. This is the first you have any need one? No, if I, if I were to go back and check, I think most would say the same thing, that it doesn't rise to the level, but.
How many boats?
Yeah, it rises to the level, I I it would be my intention for that event to never happen again. Without a Coast Guard permit, without a police detail.
That count permit?
Yeah. The uh. The one day uh event application that you want, can we make it contained upon getting a Coast Guard permit as well?
Or, or like, it's private, like Cito, okay, as part of getting your permit, you have to pay for a Cito boat. Out there, you know, something, some other. Anything, anything, they were hanging around um some of these other events, just because they know there's business there. So, but just paying for what, you know, the help that's.
I'm sorry, I realize it's getting late, but I do have.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know anything about this, I I have a pretty good idea what, what the uh Marine Max was doing. And I gather they were further out in the, in the water that's, in the water that's wet all the time.
All the time, that's really.
Um, and that the other event, which I know, I gather, somebody knows something about it, but I know nothing. What was that?
That was a uh family celebration.
Okay.
It's first, it's five years ago, fiftieth birthday celebration.
So are we, do we know who the family is, and I'm not asking you to say that, I'm just asking, we do know and. Had they come to talk to anybody in advance about saying, we want to have this party?
Well, they did it and they did go to the Coast Guard. They sent me the email, uh, we're gonna do this, great, you know, reach out to the Coast Guard, they did it. Clearly, the level of particip- participation has escalated pretty dramatically. The first year. It's, it's like any. Discover a thing, word about, Marine Max is in some ways. Uh, very worrisome to me because we had a lot of boats come that had never been here before, and they came and it was body rock, it was from brand, so. I would, I would suggest that the local, uh, the uh, the private party was all locals. Yeah, it was.
Okay, well, the next thing. That. Um, is the underage drinking, is that done by families? Or is that, was, was Marine Max handing out beers, uh, was the family? Yeah, or or is this just, hey, we're out on the water, you're sixteen, you know, have a beer with us, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, Marine Max, there was, there was drinking, I don't know if it was underage drinking. I do not know, I, in passing through, when you drive by and somebody yells, hey buddy. To the harbor master. Usually clearly, no, that's, that's first indication to me that maybe it might be some drinking going on.
Okay, was anybody selling there?
I have no idea, I have no idea. I, we weren't, we weren't.
Is that part of the permit process? Does the Coast Guard care?
About the drinking, I I certainly assume they do, but uh, no permit, there's no permit issued by the Coast Guard that would allow them to sell. Absolutely not.
So in these circumstances, people, they show up with their own?
Yeah, BYOB.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Okay, I think that uh.
Yeah.
What we need to do is, we have a bit of a hike. Um, we obviously have more to do on this, I I would like to find out what specifically the Coast Guard. Permit required, what their guidelines are, um, can I just go online and find that?
Uh, I don't know for sure. If you can navigate the federal website.
Yeah.
These applications, excuse me, have to go to Boston, plus. I'm sure we can find out, yeah, we can, I, I I know for a fact, if I reach out to Tim Chase. Uh, in Boston, they'll.
Can you get that information for us?
I'm sure, yeah.
Would you get that?
Also, I think that um. It would be good to know what. Types of uh criteria you would like on permits for us to discuss.
I have one other general comment, um. My experience is that the Coast Guard does not have landing craft. Or shallow boats.
Correct, so.
And they don't swim.
Same path that is at the uh, our, orange safe boat.
Probably not, probably even deeper, because they're the next generation.
They came in the uh Coast Guard twenty-nine, which is the same draft. But they too are going to be judicious, they're gonna pack around the edges and grab the.
So, so what we need to do is move the events out into deeper water. Are one of the things that might help would be to move the events out into deeper water, so more boat, so the Coast Guard could be useful. And so the, the orange boat, hope to be a green boat soon, would be. Would be able to um. Patrol, um.
So the, the challenge becomes restricting anchoring, we don't have the authority to do that. Except uh in.
But.
A swimmer.
As a part of our permit process. Could the town require?
I, if, if it's restricting anchoring, I don't, so, only the Coast Guard has the right to restrict anchoring.
Okay.
We could ask the Coast Guard.
Yeah.
That uh, their anchoring be restricted to a depth of no less than five feet at low tide.
So we can request that.
We can request it.
And, and I think we have good reason to do that, because it makes it possible for the Coast Guard to help us.
What about the uh day use mornings?
Well, so that's kind of. That's a hot topic. Last time we approached this, we had a hundred and seventy people sign petition. Uh, not to do it, which led to the decision not to do it. I think, I think that's a potentially a discussion for a whole evening, maybe, uh, the other ideas, the chief and I have had. Or what may be appropriate to, to do as far as staffing goes out there. With that, we are a while.
I think we need to think about this some before and, and get the Coast Guard permit. Regulations.
Yeah, question, where, where is the, we haven't mentioned the environmental police at all.
So.
Where do they fit in?
So they, if they, it's a staffing issue.
Well, that wasn't my question though, what is their responsibility, because when I get boarded, they're the ones that do it.
Oh, really, uh, are you fishing usually?
No, they just do the safety checks.
So.
Especially on Fourth of July, I can't get it, right?
Coast Guard, environmental police, harbor master, state police patrol, Gloucester police, any, any waterfront. Oriented enforcement agency has the legal right to board any vessel and do a safety check.
Absolutely.
Without exception, uh, we could ask MEP to be here during these events as well. But they are going to determine that.
Well, I I, what I'm trying to get at is, I don't think it should be all on us. And, and so I'm, I'm asking these questions to just kind of poke around to see who else could we get help from, and understanding there's a staffing issue, but. Staffing is usually a result of a budget shortfall, which these people who want to hold these events should be paying for. Right, what, I don't want our tax dollars to go up because outsiders are coming in here and with three hundred boats, because it's pretty outside.
Even townspeople.
Or even, right.
Causing the, you know, if you, if you want to have something at tax point.
Right, right, so as part of the permitting process, when you guys come back to us with this well-thought-out set of recommendations, I'm trying to give you some like. Specific things to go poke at, like how would we pay for the additional, whether it's environmental police, whatever? And get the people who want these permits, maybe it's not a cheap permit.
We, we already have some. Put together, formalized, as far as MEP goes, they have no permit for these sorts of things. So they're not a, a permit issue agency, therefore, we probably say, help out if we can, but it's not ours. That's just my quick thought on that, and they have been around recently.
Hey, there's a big opportunity for them to do safety checks, all these boats are gonna be over here.
Weekend voting is uh.
Boats are sold out. So, all right, well, this is um, it's pretty significant situation and it, it. It's been kind of ticking along for a little bit, but I think we hit beyond the tipping point. So, the next steps are, we would like to get what the Coast Guard guidelines are. You two will come up with some permitting draft ideas, and in the meantime. What do we as a board want to be working, doing? Do we want to be looking into different other aspects? I, I've got some things I'm going to be working on.
I, I personally think the experts need to come to us with recommendations, and, and we've given them a lot to think about and.
Super, and they ask, yeah.
So I, I, I'll just take a quick second to thank for all of you to understand that. I'm very thankful for the police department and their staff. I can tell you that the relationship with the harbor department, the help that the harbor department gets from the police department. This community is pretty exceptional. So, thank you, Chief. To hear and know.
Excellent, good.
All right, we'll be back.
Do you all just wanna let us know when you, when you like to come back?
Yeah, because it's, now it's kind of a active time.
So, can I make a suggestion that it be um. You know, obviously after the season's over, right, but. Before the end of the year.
Oh, well before the end.
Right, right, I would wanna wait until.
Good times.
Right, I'm big on timing, right, we, we warned you about that, so.
I appreciate that very much, so, yeah, this fall would be a great time for us to be able to dig down, dial in.
Freshen everybody's mind, yeah.
Thank you both very much, and I'm very sorry that you, your staff and yours.
Well, here's good news, nobody got hurt.
That, that, that is a big thing, yes, absolutely. Safe ground.
Have a good night, yeah.
Um, yes, you guys, but we skipped days on updates, I'm gonna send you a mail out. Um, at this point. And then, say again. And now let's move on consent agenda. Okay, we have um the warrant that has to be. A big, in a very specific way, I believe, is that right?
Well, there's two pieces, this approval of the, of the warrant for the state primary. And then there's a motion. To approve um police details at, at the polling, at the polling force. There's a, there's a recommended motion for you to make. Specific to that second issue.
Okay, um. Then may I have a motion to accept the warrant for state primary on September sixth, twenty-two thousand three-two?
So moved.
Now, second?
Second.
On favor, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellotta?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says, yes, that was moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by Brian Solace. The next motion is to approve a sufficient number of police officers, but not less than one. At the polling location at every election there and to preserve order. And to protect the election officials and supervisors from any interference with their duty. And to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections as required by section two of Mass General Law. Chapter fifty-four, which was changed in section thirteen of chapter ninety-two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two. And further to move to designate the police chief, the authority to assign specific police officers. According to scheduling and availability. The town clerk will advise the police chief on the location and time the officer or officers.
Moved as red, second.
Thank you, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by John Round, may I have a roll call vote to Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Bellotta?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. So, um. Can we take D and E together, the acceptance of resignation, Kurt Stet, Sataca Vice, Vice Pet Committee? And the approval of the wetland survey of Chewbacca Road? Okay, do those together? Okay, motion to approve those two items, please?
Motion to approve D and E.
Second, please?
Second.
Okay, moved by John Round, seconded Brian Solace, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellotta?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes, and now we have the uh. The Boston Coast Kane. Um, which John sent the information to us a while back, and um. I think that would be wonderful for the board to do, um, any comments on that? That we missed this year, unfortunately, but I still think we could still do it, we've missed the Fourth of July.
Make it a labor.
Sometime in September, and it's one that's been done in the past, so.
Okay.
That's a good note, window.
So let's talk about that September first, right, Labor Day or Labor Day rather, which is the fourth, I think. Okay, um. May I have a motion to approve the uh transfer. Of the um. Boston Coast Kane from the elder brother, brethren to the select board, Manchester Select Board.
I move that, yes, the transfer of the aw- awarding of the Kane for.
Yes. Okay, um.
Second.
Thank you, moved by Don Round, seconded by Brian Solace, the roll call vote, Anne Harrison.
I guess. How do we figure out who it goes to?
It's, okay, it's the old. It's, okay, it's the oldest man or woman in town, whomever the oldest person.
How do we know?
We will have to figure out something mechanically here. Certainly the cricket would help, help out. That would probably wind up perhaps on Debbie's, Debbie's desk to. We'll get the appropriate people involved.
I would, I would not like to be at an awards ceremony where somebody stands up and says, hey, I'm older than that.
Well, then we just given them.
Now we can have just a pronoun.
I've been to a few of the elder brethren awards when it was strictly an award there and we, we didn't have any pista cuffs.
I'm glad to hear that. So we have a motion.
Okay, and, and, and my, my point has been clarified and somebody else will decide and that's fine with me, yes.
Okay, Kathy Bellotta?
Yes.
Brian Solace, John Round, and Becky Jake says yes as well. That, that'll be fun. China administrators report.
Okay, it's a few items. One, I wish we had your workshop on Saturday, productive session. Focus was really on procedures, process. Your meeting protocols, I thought all of that was a productive discussion. Did not have time to go into sort of strategy priorities, which will continue at that's your continuation of the, of the workshop, which will be the twenty-first. So, just wanted to give that quick update, the audience is listening and, and know that you're doing well to keep plugging away, so that's all good. I, I did just want to underscore with the, the September meeting date, the question of conflicting with the, with the primary. It's frowned upon, it's not an absolute no-no, but it is frowned upon to hold a public meeting. While an election is taking place, so I didn't know if there's an ability to to, to look at a different date for that first meeting in September. And now we don't need to settle that right now, but it's like all, you're starting to look at your calendars. If, if you can take a quick look and we nail it down fine, I just, we can do it at your next meeting.
So.
Can we move it up a week?
What do you mean?
Early? August has, August has five minutes.
We were going to have a spillover meeting.
Do it on the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth, and we weren't sure we would need it, maybe to Brian's point, we could use it for this.
Can we do that?
An interesting.
I mean, I don't think we can go to Wednesday because it's probably or possibly a CBA meeting. Hopefully it'll be done by, you've got forty days, so from where that falls in.
Thursday is a possibility.
Thursday of the eighth?
That's true.
Okay.
I guess I won't be here, but if everybody else, that takes care of it, man can care. I will not be able to.
I, I'm on my calendar and lost track of what, what day are we looking at?
Thursday, September eighth. Okay, we're in. Tried the, yes, thank you.
It, I didn't think it through.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So in November, doing the sixth, it would be moved to September eighth.
Yes, I can, I, I have nothing going on on the eights.
Would that work for everybody else?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like that would be it and am in chair of that meeting.
Okay, and lastly, as I think most of you know, there was a lot of concern about some activity on a property in the corner of C Street. So the building inspector has been in contact with the owner. It does appear that, that that the thresholds might have been, might have been reached, that should require a special permit. So he's following up with that and will be issuing a letter of violation requesting that they need to come in for special permit for that work. So I think, no, that process works. I know that a lot of people were concerned and wanting immediate action, but we have to be pretty methodical in our approach to, to situations like that. Let, let the process play out. There's no more work during that. So that, that's, that's where we are with that. Say two. Go forward.
They did, they, they did have an application back.
They had an application for an A and R, which.
They were, they were. Back in December, and that was true.
Right, they were due all the applications.
Okay, this is, this is, it's your administrator's report, are we, you can step up?
Just discussing the facts of what has transpired, that's fine.
This has that property as a one.
So the, the short of it is, the building inspector is following up following through on enforcement activities and will bring it into compliance.
Yeah, but work is stopped, I'm sorry, on, on that, there's nothing going on.
It had, it had already stopped.
Oh, it had, all right, so maybe at least this.
They did what they wanted to do, they buttoned it up. But in doing what they wanted to do, they exceeded the threshold that they told them not to exceed.
And maybe the emails have died down, at least put that out.
But, but much of what's gone on there in terms of on the property and trees, that's private property.
Understood.
Right, we, we do not have regulations about tree cutting or.
Yes.
So then that is true. So those are, those are the three items I wanted to go over, so. Good for now.
Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded John Round, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Biggs says yes. Thank you all for attending. Good night.